This had a presentation. Quilts. Quilts, that's gonna go after the... Mayor's conference. Now who's this one? Who?
CJ had his picture taken.
CJ? Wow. Mel, Mel, Mel's the clerk.
This is a regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, November 21st. Please stand for our invocation led by Pastor Ronald McCants, Theodore, First United Methodist Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. God of heaven and earth, we come before your eternal throne of majestic mercy and grace with thanksgiving. Your living words beckons grateful hearts to give thanks to the Lord, for you are good. Your faithful love endures forever. During this season of thanksgiving, people from every walk in life are mindful of your blessings. Thank you for those who make a positive difference in people's lives, making our city a better place to live. Thank you for those employees and community and housing development who care for the basic needs of sheltering families. Thank you for police who provide safety and the fire department who often endanger their lives to save others. Thank you for schoolteachers, cafeteria workers, custodians, and administrators who educate our children. Thank you for hospitals and nursing homes, nurses, doctors, and technicians whom you have gifted with medical skills for your healing. Thank you for all public servants. Thank you for businesses, both small and large, in every industry for this city's prosperity. Thank you for men and women who serve in the United States Armed Forces of America. Thank you, O God, for your spirit that guides us and makes us wiser in making just decisions with care for every man, woman, and child. Your psalmist's words tells us, "The earth is the Lord's in all its fullness, the world and those who dwell therein." To you be the glory, in your holy name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Volkoff, Vice President Manzi.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Small.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
We're certainly happy to see each and every one of you here for this week's City Council meeting. We have some very simple rules for everyone to abide by. Any person desiring to speak before the council on a non-gen item must contact the City Clerk's office no later than 2:00 PM on a Thursday prior to the council meeting. We're asking that you would silence all of your electronic devices. Each speaker is allowed five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to me, the chair, who will subsequently recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain the quorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed.
Approval of minutes of November 14th.
Some, some who?
Second.
Probably motion to second. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Approval granted.
Communications went to me.
Well, good morning. It's good to see everyone here this morning. First, I have a certificate of recognition for Captain Dwight Smith. Is Captain Smith, there, okay. If you would please, and Chief Sealy, please come to the podium. Captain Smith is being recognized as firefighter of the month. And the certificate of recognition reads, "Captain Smith has exhibited extreme professionalism in all his assigned tasks. He has graciously taken on assignments that were outside his current job description without complaint. In the past three months, he has successfully completed multiple tasks, many without assistance at all. His hard work, dedication, and perseverance should not go unnoticed. He's the consummate professional and ideal team player, role model for the younger firefighters on this department." I am sure that after reading the attachment, you will certainly agree. And the attachment reads, "The following is a short summary of recent weeks and a sample of what Captain Smith does all year: Hands-on CPR for multiple schools in the Mobile County Public School System; Teaching hands-on CPR to Habitat for Humanity; Teaching fire safety precautions at schools, churches, the Strickland Youth Center, fire stations, independent living facilities, and fire extinguisher classes. Also works with public education programs from K-3 through the 5th grade throughout Mobile County; Numerous community events throughout the city; The smoke alarm installation program." Actually, let me pause there just for a moment. The city of Mobile, specifically the Mobile Fire Rescue Department, working in conjunction with the Red Cross? Is that correct? Last year, they installed two, two thou- Two, two thousand smoke detectors in homes that did not have them. This is an initiative that Captain Smith spearheaded, and this year they're doing the same program, so this is the second year of the giving away free smoke alarms to our citizens that certainly, in those areas that would probably be deemed most vulnerable, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Having said all that, Captain Smith, congratulations being firefighter of the month. We appreciate your service. Thank you. Does anybody in here know where Walker Springs, Alabama is? I do. And that's where he's from. It's Clark County. It's a great place to be from, right, Captain?
Yes, sir.
Okay. A couple of other just announcements. Appreciate those that came out to the lighting of the Christmas tree this past Friday night. There are plenty of reasons that we all have to celebrate going forward throughout the holidays. I would remind everybody to please, you know, whether you're shopping or in your vehicle or at home, just be sure, be cautious and be safe. There's nothing that we would want other than you have a safe holiday starting tomorrow. Small Business Saturday, we encourage you to support our local businesses this Saturday for what's known as Small Business Saturday. You can stop by the welcome table at 261 Dolphin Street for a cup of cocoa and pick up a passport to be eligible to win a $100 downtown Mobile gift certificate card. Announcement that we heard last week, or it was told to us by the National Fish and Wildlife Federation, that the City of Mobile was awarded a $7 million grant to conserve and protect the city's coastline. We call this a NIFWIF grant. Up in the top, I agree with you, it's a big deal. This is an opportunity as part of Phase 2 of the Mobile Bay Shore Habitat Conservation and Acquisition Initiative. It will acquire, restore, and preserve habitats that are used by the fish and wildlife species injured by the oil spill. It includes land acquisition in the Three Mile Creek, the Perch Creek, and the Garrow's Bend watersheds; shoreline restoration along Mobile Bay shore; marsh, marsh restoration, and water quality improvements, and invasive species management. Many partners got together to participate in the request for this grant. Roberta Swan, it could not have been done without Roberta and all that she brings to the table having to do with environmental issues in the Mobile Bay watershed, but there were many other partners, and we want to thank each and every one of them. One of the outcomes of this, other than what was read, was that the bridge on Perch Creek, right before you get to Dog River Bridge, that bridge will be raised, and I don't know if it's two feet or three feet, but it will be raised so that kayakers can kayak in Perch Creek as part of a Blue Way Trail. And so we have a lot of our kayakers who are really excited about being recipients, uh, Mobile being the recipients of this grant. Thanksgiving, there will be no trash or garbage picked up on Thanksgiving Day, November 23rd, but we will run on Black Friday, November 24th. The makeup day for garbage will be this Saturday, and there'll be no makeup date for the trash. This is Thanksgiving, everybody knows that. I am thankful and grateful and honored to be your mayor, just as I'm sure the City Council is. But I'm also thankful and grateful for the next announcement I'd like to make. So I would ask Mayor Eli Shaverro and his associate, Avi Zimmerman, please meet me at the podium. As you know, the City of Mobile has several sister cities. To me, one of the ones that's probably one of the more important ones, and it's certainly exhibited by Mayor Shaverro's coming to Mobile. This is your third trip to Mobile, is that correct? This is the third trip since we became a sister city with Ariel. For those in the audience behind me, I think when you think of Israel, you think of very, very, you know, old civilization, a very old country. But I'll, but I'll tell you this, that the city of Ariel was only founded 40 years ago. And it is a dynamic, bright spot, growing, thriving community. And Mayor Shaverro is the second mayor of the city. And we are truly honored that he's stopped in Mobile on a swing through the United States. And Mayor, one day, I hope to come to Israel to see your city. So if you'll step forward just a little closer. We have a proclamation that's signed by myself and the City Council. This, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas the city of Ariel, Israel, and the city of Mobile, Alabama established a sister-city relationship in the year 2009 with the objective of adding impetus to the development of the two cities and also to the mutual understanding between Israel and the American people. And whereas the two cities have agreed to give all-round support to studying the possibilities of promoting equitable and effective cooperation and to strengthening relationships; and whereas the sister cities have agreed to promote cooperation designed to add extending collaboration between their cities in economic, commercial, and cultural and scientific spheres; and whereas, with the objective of implementing the above-mentioned understanding, the two cities will establish appropriate ties and contacts and shall hold mutual consultation on concrete issues of cooperation." Now therefore, I, William S. Simpson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, Alabama, do hereby proclaim November 21st, 2017, as Ariel, Israel Day in the City of Mobile. Congratulations and thank you, Mayor.
I will say some words. First of all, I want to say thank you, thank you all. It's an honor to us to be here. We're celebrating 40 years. And I know that it's, it's a short time when we spoke about a city like Mobile, but for us is a, a big deal. Again, thank you very much. And I inviting you all to come to Israel and to come to Ariel to see our city. Thank you very much.
Just briefly, this evening, we'll be holding a 40-year celebration for the city of Ariel here in Mobile. This is at the end of a, an extensive trip through five straits across, states across the US. We have our singers and dancers, teenagers, who have come to perform for the community here. This will be the finale with our sister city here in the US. We'll be at 5:30 PM, a reception at the Gaucher Lay Room at the, at Spring Hill College. City Council members are all welcome. And thereafter, we'll be at the St. Paul's Episcopal Theater with a 6:30 performance for the entire community. Thank you.
We now have a special presentation from Councilwoman.
He saved everybody here, or for the most part.
And while, while she's coming, I want to recognize the inaugural court of the Order of Doves Royal Court. Will you all stand? Let's give them a big round. Thank you all for coming today.
Mr. Manzi.
Yes, ma'am.
I also want to introduce my student.
Yes, ma'am.
Brooke, if you would stand, this is Brooke Whitfield. She's from Faith Academy. She's a senior, and I understand that there are some Faith Academy students in this group. But Brooke comes today to shadow me as part of her government class at Faith Academy. And again, she's a senior, looking forward to going to the University of South Alabama, so we will keep her right here in town. So Brooke, thank you for coming today. Hope you've enjoyed yourself.
Councilman, Councilman Manzi, just before Ms. Rich come up, also with the Order of Doves is a City Councilmember of Pritchett, Alabama, Lorenzo Martin. He's in the audience with them as the chaperone with the Royal Court of the Order of Doves.
Thank you.
He looked young enough. I thought you were another student. You looked so young.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce Joyce Davis Reed, who will come forward and introduce the other ladies that are with her. We do have the recipient for Mobile Fire Rescue Department. Unfortunately, on the police side of the aisle, he is busy arresting a murder suspect, and he cannot be present with us today. Now, our Public Safety Director has offered to take the quilt, James Barber. And I guess we'll start with, with Jimmy. And actually, it had been my hope to have Jimmy stand up, because I believe that Jimmy also deserves his own quilt today for being a veteran. And we don't have all the specifics on Jimmy, but I know there's a quilt available. So Jimmy, besides taking the quilt in honor of the recipient that they do have the background on, I hope you'll stand still and let those ladies also honor you today as well.
Simply stated, I come as a representative of the Quilts of Valor Foundation nationwide. There are over 10,000 quilters currently working on quilts to honor veterans. Many of you in this room have heard of the program, or some have even received their own quilts. Simply stated, our mission is to cover service members and veterans touched by war with wartime quilts called Hils, Quilts of Valor. This spring, we divided from a Mobile-Baldwin County group into two different groups that are a part of that. So now we are stars over Mobile, trying to cover all of the veterans in Mobile. And that's thousands of them, so we've got a lot of work cut out for us. We began in 2003 when Catherine Roberts of Seaford, Delaware, who was a Blue Star Mom, had a dream, literally a dream. "Her son was deployed in Iraq, and she was always 10 seconds away from panic," she said, "all day long, 24/7." But that dream was exhibited as real life to her. She saw a young man sitting on the side of his bunk, hunched over, in the middle of the night, a permeating feeling of utter despair. It was as though she could see his war demons clustered around him, dragging him down into that emotional gutter. And then, as if watching a movie, the next scene was totally transformed. He was sitting on the side of the bed wrapped in a quilt. His whole demeanor had changed from one of despair to one of hope and well-being. And she felt like it was the quilt that had made this change. Because we are one human being reaching out and touching another without judgment, we reach out with our quilts with an acceptance and acknowledgement of their service to our country in very trying circumstances. We, as a foundation, go wherever those who've been touched by war go or are. We don't need high-profile venues to find them, because many veterans are in plain sight. They're our neighbors and our friends and our family. Today, we recognize and acknowledge that war demons survive from all wars in the past. Over 10,000 of us are hard at work trying to cover those conflicts, those soldiers who have come back from various conflicts in World War II, Korea, Vietnam, Iraq, and Afghanistan. The Quilts of Valor are found in every state in the Union and in Canada, Germany, and the United Kingdom and Australia. We are the fastest-growing grassroots organization in America, or at least it feels like it. She sent her son a quilt 14 years ago and got her friend's challenge, so let's see if we can do a few more. Let's see if we can get 100 quilts together. That took three years. Well, today, 14 years later, we are well over 170,000 quilts. Given, first one went to Walter Reed Army Hospital. Quilts today can go anywhere. They can go to a local home, to a person who's unable to get out. They can go in a city council meeting to honor one of the city employees. They can go in a church service on 4th of July to honor some church members who they know have served our country. We are a network of toppers or piecers who purchase fabrics, make the top of the quilt, choosing our own fabric and patterns, as long as the fabric is high-quality and our work is the best we can do. Our quilts are bound for overseas. If they are, they're red, white, and blue, and gold and color themed to fit the patriotic nature of our project. But they may also stay statewide to whoever needs them. We have long armors who take our tops and our backings, they add the batting, and they stitch the three layers together. Sometimes it takes three months start to finish to make one of these quilts. And it may take as much as $250 in materials and supplies to create one, an average of over 60 total hours per quilt. But the fact is, the Quilts of Valor is priceless. It can never be bought, it can never be sold. It's never a birthday gift or a Christmas gift. Recipients often state it means more to them than any of the military medals they've received, because it comes from the hearts and hands of the makers and their community. A quilt of valor is a thank you, an award from all of us for your service and your sacrifice. Our quilts have gone to medevac units in Afghanistan, to Lahnstedt, Germany, and locally, the military hospitals and the Green Home in Vamonah. Wherever the need is greatest, wherever there's a need for comfort and for healing. We also keep them locally and send them to the veterans as they're needed. It's the beauty of the foundation, we can choose where we send our quilts. We award them to every member of every branch of service that we can locate, of all the different areas. We shed tears with a warrior who needs to prolong that hug that comes from an awarded Quilts of Valor. We call it divine intervention. Something magical and healing is emitted from the folds of these quilts many times. The mother who finds her son wrapped in his Quilts of Valor and sleeping peacefully for the first night since he left Vietnam, she can now sleep in peace as well. Or the Korean War veteran, or those who've served in Iraq and Afghanistan. They now stand tall with honor, respect, and recognition for their service and the sacrifice. They're also rising out of the ashes of war. This story repeats itself over and over. And you hear many stories of veterans who've come back and they've suffered from PTSD. They can't sleep at night, they're on meds, but they get their Quilts of Valor, and they're now sleeping under their quilt. And they've reduced their beds sometimes to no beds. They are doing so much better emotionally after receiving their quilt. Because we sow love, caring, and gratitude into our quilts through our hands and from our hearts into the ones we make. As quilters, we want you to know that through our quilts, you're in our hearts forever, because this is our form of national service. At this age, most of us can no longer go overseas or even go next door to shove paperwork and do that part of the service that needs to be done. But we know that we can do this little bit, we can make a quilt, we can hug a veteran and say thank you. And so it's a way to share, a warm hug with a friend or family member traditionally, and we've extended that to include our veterans. Because for those, for many of those, their service to our country went unnoticed, and this warm hug is invaluable. Today, we want to honor, I guess, three veterans. We want to honor Louis "Ricky" Butterworth and Raymond Grissette Jr. and our Chief Barber. Ricky Butterworth was born in Mobile, Alabama, and attended Evangel Christian School. He joined the United States Marine Corps in 1985, where he served until 1992. He began with basic training at Paris Island in South Carolina. His first duty station was in Mobile. He served the United States in the infantry, where his specialty was armor and weapons repairs. He served in Desert Shield, Desert Storm, and Operation Iraqi Freedom in both Saudi Arabia and Iraq, achieving the rank of Sergeant. For his service, he received the Good Conduct Medal, the Desert Storm Campaign Medal, the Kuwait Liberation Medal, a Marine Unit Citation, two National Defense Medals, the Armed Forces Reserve Medal twice, the Global War on Terrorism Medal, and the Sea Service Deployment Medal. In civilian life, he served with the Mobile Fire and Rescue Department. He's married with two sons and is active in Wilson Avenue Baptist Church. Today, we would like to award Louis Butterworth with his Quilts of Valor and thank him for the many freedoms we enjoy with a big Quilts of Valor hug. We also honor Raymond Grissette. He was born in Mobile, Alabama, and attended B.C. Rain High School and ACI, which I, or ACU, which I think is American Continental University. He served in the United States Marine Corps for 20 years, beginning with boot camp at Paris Island in South Carolina. His first duty station was Camp Lejeune in North Carolina, where he was a PFC. His areas of expertise included military police and force reconnaissance. He served his country in Iraq, Afghanistan, and Kuwait during Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom. For his service, he received the NATO Medal, the OEF Service Medal, the OEF Expedition Medal, OIF Expedition Medal, OIF Service Medal, Marine Corps Good Conduct Medal, Army Service Ribbon, the Overseas Training Ribbon, and a Combat Action Badge. His final rank was that of SFC E7. As a civilian, Raymond served the Mobile Police Department in the homicide unit. In his spare time, he enjoys hunting and motorcycling. He has two daughters and one son. And today, we'd like to thank him for his service to our country. We're gonna share the quilt with Chief Barber this morning, that you all get a sample of what it looks like. And he can go home and award him that when he's, when he's caught the perk this morning.
Great community service today, no doubt. And I know you don't have a background.
And I don't have an extended background on his, and I didn't have permission to call Human Resources to get me to fill on Chief Barber, or I'm not sure what his current title is, since he's moved up in the. Okay, great, but he's, um, we do have a. But he's, we did have a quilt for him today and we'd like to award it to him and thank him for his years of service, not only to our nation but also to our community.
It probably wouldn't surprise you. My service was the United States Marine Corps. Three Marines honored today and so I'm very proud for their service to our country, to our God country, in our Corps, whether you fought for God country or Corps, for the guy to fight foxhole next to you. My service dates ran from 1980 through 1983. It was the beginning of our involvement in Beirut, Lebanon, where nearly 300 Marines were killed in a truck bombing by Hezbollah. And from 1983 on is when the Marines continue and the other services continue to fight abroad for our safety here in this country. And so thank you to all servicemen. I usually crack jokes, I'm not going to pick on the other services today. But I do have the tattoo, USMC, on my upper-left arm, probably the other Marines do too. Big regret, you have to work out for the rest of your life because if you don't, it just reads "us." Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda?
Any discussion? All those in favor, sound of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted. Again, we want to say congratulations to the inaugural court of the Order of Doves. Hope you all have a wonderful year, Councilman Martin. Keep up the good work. And thank you all for coming today.
Appeals, we have requests for wave the noise ordinance on November 25th on Laurel Drive, November 25th on Church Street, November 22nd on Magoo Drive, November 25th and 26th on Wood Cliff Drive East.
Come on. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearing, today is a public hearing to consider assenting to the vacation of a right-of-way on the south side of Oshel Road, west of Alverson Road, and north of Monk's. Public hearing, today is a public hearing to consider assenting to the vacation of a right-of-way on the south side of Oshel Road, west of Alverson Road, and north of Monk Avenue.
Is there anyone with commentary relative to this particular address in this public hearing? Yes, sir, come forward. If you would, give us your name and your address, please.
Yeah, good morning, Council, Mr. Mayor. I'm Dr. Mike Bucknell. Currently, office at 7921 Tanner Williams Road in West Mobile. And we moved down here 14 years ago, my wife and I. We have three locals now, kids. 14 years ago, didn't have a, barely could put a clock on the wall and a bookcase out. But now we're looking to purchase this property and so we're looking to develop the area. And there's not a whole lot out there right now. So we're looking forward to making a permanent home here now that, for both our office and coffee shop. So if anybody has any questions or anything, I'm looking forward to working with the city and everything and being long-term, long-term residents, of course.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for coming down, I appreciate it. I know there was no opposition at the planning commission meeting. I think it's terrific what you're doing. That area is certainly ripe for development and what you're putting in is perfect. So thank you for doing that. Look forward to having ribbon cutting over there, grand opening.
Thank you.
Public hearing, any other commentary? Public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to rezone property at 1016 Hillcrest Road, west side of Hillcrest Road, 575 feet north of Johnston Lane, extending to the north side of Johnston Lane, 350 feet west of Hillcrest Road, from R1 and V3 to V3.
Is there anyone here with commentary relative to this particular address for this public hearing?
Robert Overmeyer?
Again, anyone who would like to?
Good morning, I'm Robert Overmeyer, 1016 Hillcrest Road, Mobile. Just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Rich for all her support and getting this done. And thank you to the City Council. We're trying to build a bigger funeral home there to better serve the community and we appreciate all your support.
Anyone else? Public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and communications to the council. Ms. Anton?
I don't see you.
Mr. Holloway, Dr. Holloway?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mayor Stimson, members of the Mobile City Council, and everybody present here today. My name is Joaquin Holloway, 2206 DeCruze Court, Mobile, Alabama, 36617. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to share some thoughts about my interest in trains. November is National Model Railroad Month. And from 2007 until 2013, the Mobile Society of Model Engineers, M SME, displayed a large modular layout in the Larkins Auditorium at the Mobile Museum of Art for a few weeks during the month of December. However, because of the very elaborate display the art and design of Modagro in 2014, for a total of six months, we were unable to use that area to set up our model railroad for various groups to enjoy. So to paraphrase a song that was written by Lefty Frisell, "If you've got the money, honey, I've got the time", our group decided to use this approach. If you've got the place and the space, we've got the layout. Therefore, beginning in 2014 and also for an extended interval in 2015 and 2016, our HO-scale operating modular layout was set up at the Gulf Coast Explorium. And several years ago, Mayor Stimson was able to adjust his schedule to open that exhibit. Also yesterday, a few members of both the Mobile Society of Model Engineers, M SME, the Southwest Alabama Railroad Modelers, SWARM, and several members of the Explorium staff positioned the layout in order for trains to once again move on the 187-inch rails during the final month of 2017. Today, I want to encourage everybody to make plans beginning next week to see the trains running on our 18-foot by 24-foot layout on three separate tracks. There are many other comments I would like to make regarding scale model trains, but I have prepared a package for the mayor and each council member to examine. And this is the packet. For the record, Councilman John Williams is a member of the group SWARM and his name is on the roster. At the lighting of the Christmas tree last Friday night, that group had a lighted train moving. Finally, as a public relations representative for our clubs, I would like to request that the Mobile City Council consider a resolution to commemorate November as National Model Railroad Month and list it as a highlighted annual local event on the website. That will keep our city posted on the internet. Plus, the trains in motion will make a good video clip. In closing, I would like to thank Councilmember Gina Gregory for her help, along with the assistance of Matt Anderson, Matt Capps, the Mobile County Sheriff's team of inmates and others who painted the locomotive 1527 in the park on Ziegler Boulevard. And in case you have not noticed this landmark, I brought a photograph that I took when the work had been completed. And so that's the locomotive. And if you haven't seen it, go by and see it. It really does look good, okay? For those who are interested in knowing more about the hobby, I brought some pamphlets about this pastime that I will be happy to distribute at the close of this meeting for those who want them. Thanks again for your attention in this matter.
Thank you, Dr. Holloway. Appreciate it.
Reggie Hill?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Mayor Stimson administration, citizens of Mobile, good morning.
Morning.
I've had the privilege since my year being back in the city to...
Mr. Hill, can you give us your name and address?
I always forget that, my apologies. Reggie Hill, 200 Governor Street. Since being back in the city, I've had the privilege to speak with many hats, representing several of the citizens in the community. And today will be no different. I rise to speak to you today about a community forum that we'll be hosting in Afriktown with the new nonprofit organization CHESS. This organization represents clean, healthy, educated, safe, and sustainable communities. We will host an environmental justice community forum at the Hope Community Center, 850 Edward Street in Plateau on Thursday, November 30th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. The event includes a free dinner and door prizes. This forum introduces residents of Afriktown to leaders of the Deep South Coalition for Environmental Justice, created to address health and environmental issues in the Gulf Coast, using an equity and racial justice lens. They're coming to listen to the residents about the biggest needs and obstacles that we face in our community, then identify ways that they can bring the weight of their expertise and resources to help the matters of concern. Our guest speakers include sociologist Dr. Robert Bullard of Texas Southern University, Dr. Beverly Wright of Dillard University, two pioneers in the environmental justice movement. Their universities are a part of the HBCU-CBO Gulf Coast Equity Consortium, a collaborative project involving historically black colleges and universities and community-based organizations. Using state-of-the-art tools, community input, and policy review analysis, the consortium will develop comprehensive plans and action strategies that seek to address social inequity, health inequity, and well-being of children and families that live in the Gulf Coast states. This includes Texas, Louisiana, Mississippi, Alabama, and Florida, with a special emphasis on Houston, New Orleans, Gulfport, Biloxi, Afriktown, and Pensacola. Texas Southern University was recently awarded a $3.3 million grant from the W.K. Kellogg Foundation to expand the consortium's work in the five communities in the Gulf Coast states. Afriktown is the only community in Alabama being represented. We are very proud of that. Other speakers at the November 30th forum include Dr. Elka Moss of My alma mater, Alabama A&amp;M University, Dr. Joan Wesley of Jackson State University, and Dr. Danae King of Texas Southern as well. In August, residents in Pensacola, Wedgwood Community attended a similar forum conducted by Unity in the Family Ministry, one of the consortium's five local nonprofit partners. Both Wedgwood and Afriktown, historically black communities whose residents are mostly working-class or poor, suffer from a disproportionate number of heavy industries in the communities. In Wedgwood, it is more than a dozen landfills. In Afriktown, it has been paper mills and now a growing number of large petrochemical storage tanks on the banks of the Mobile River where this community sits. Residents in both the Gulf Coast communities believe decades of exposure to pollutants from these industries have caused a number of serious health problems over the years. For years, Afriktown community has been smothered and stilted by the encroachment of large polluting industries, seeking prime real estate along the Mobile River. Afriktown's residents have long fought tireless environmental justice battles to preserve the quality of the air, the land, and water. And they depend on, for their very health and the future of our generations. Dr. Bullard from Texas Southern is known as the father of environmental justice because his decades of research found that people of color are the majority of those living closest to the nation's most hazardous industries and waste facilities. Dr. Wright is renowned for 25-year advocacy work on behalf of low-income minority residents along Cancer Alley in 85-mile stretch of the Mississippi River above New Orleans, where about 140 residential plants spew pollutants into the river. She is the founder of the DSCJ. The goals of the Deep South Coalition of Environmental Justice and its consortium partners include research, data collection, community training, and advocacy on behalf of the five communities that are included in the $3.3 million grant. CHESS exists to ensure that the Afriktown community in Mobile, Alabama, is clean, healthy, educated, safe, and sustainable. Through its partnership with the Deep South Center of Environmental Justice, the HBCO Gulf Coast Equity Consortium, and the Kellogg Foundation, CHESS will implement strategies and best practices that improve the quality of life for residents all across the Gulf Coast. CHESS's aim is to reestablish the unity in a neighborhood that once thrived as the example of the most loving and family-oriented atmosphere in the Deep South. CHESS will be leading the example of changemakers in the historic Afriktown area through projects geared towards beautifying streetscapes, innovative community restoration, preserving historic homes and institutions, particularly the first school for African-Americans in the state of Alabama, Mobile County Training School, producing quality foods and increasing living standards, youth programs and social initiatives, and retaining the culture and heritage of a nearly forgotten people, descendants of the kidnapped Africans on the last slave ship brought from Africa. So for more information about CHESS, please visit our website, www.chescommunities.org, and stay connected with us on Facebook at CHESS Mobile. Thank you for entertaining our petition. We hope to see each of you there. We're inviting the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Jeffrey Jones?
How you doing today, everybody in there?
All right.
Morning.
And council? This sign says, "Vote or Die Campaign."
Mr. Jones, if you could, could you state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry, I apologize. My name is Jeffrey Ray Jones. I live on St. Stevens Road, okay?
We need your number. We're on St. Stevens.
It's two, my mother's across the street.
You're the one.
1463.
Thank you.
Okay, great. But I wanted to let everybody know about the Vote or Die Campaign. And what is the Vote or Die Campaign? In the beginning of this country, starting in the late 1700s, only white men with real property of certain age could vote. Then the right to vote was expanded to include white men who served in the military. Then to, then to other white men without property. Then all men after slavery, black men, could vote but not white women could vote. Then it was restricted to white men in certain parts of the country. Then it was expanded to women. Then it was expanded to all voters of certain age. Then it was expanded to include those 18 years of old. And if you look at the Constitution of the United States, 17 of the 27 amendments address voting. And the reason that I come today is to talk about the conflict within this council. Because if you remember during the redistricting of this city, prior to the election, I think 2010, maybe 14, I sent letters to each of you, to the Justice Department at the time, it was Kenyon Brown. In fact, I was working with a civil rights organization, had found an individual to actually fund the lawsuit challenging the redistricting plan that this council was proposing. All I needed was one individual on this council. Some of you were not here, I understand that. But all I needed was one council member to propose an alternative to that council plan that was drafted. Because in that plan... Because in that plan, it was a matter of fact that gerrymandering of certain number of minorities were being stacked in certain areas to only produce three black council representatives. Because if you did it right, black people would have to campaign to white people, and white people would have to campaign to black people. Right now, you're at one vote. That's what it takes. And see, there are people, scalabags, what do they call them, scallawags, copperbaggers and all, they come out of Washington trying to tell us what to do here in Alabama. Some people swear they're going to save me. I don't need them to save me, because I can save myself. And I say to this council, I remember when it was three commissioners. I was a protester then, arguing against the three-commissioned form of government. I was working with young white people. There were whites and blacks fighting that form of government. It took a suit in the U.S. Supreme Court to change that form of government, and we're still arguing the same issue. My daughter attends Chestang School over there. She told me, she said, Daddy, all white people are rich. I was astounded to hear my child say that, because everybody's struggling, okay? Everybody. And now you're still arguing about the same issue, which I get it. Some people say, don't listen to Jeffrey Jones, don't pay no attention to him. That's why, in the records, if you'll look, this race issue should have been addressed then. It's too late now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Anthony Thompson.
My name is Anthony Thompson of 914 Stewart Road, Mobile, Alabama. As I ran for office, all of you all gave me nothing but utmost respect and professionalism, along with Mayor Stimson, and I stand here wanting Mayor Stimson to succeed and wanting you to succeed too. As George Bush said in 1989, "No generation can escape its history." At this point, we will either look back at Mobile and be judged harshly, or this can be a moment of inspiration. I ask the council, take a moment to pause, look from an outside point of view, and look at the actions and the consequences of your behaviors from a macro point of view. If you look at how things are right now, Mayor Stimson ran on a platform of one Mobile. However, the current council is unable to elect a president using tradition of four out of seven votes. Now, I stand here not having a personal connection or relationship with any of you all. I'm here because we need to follow tradition. By not following tradition, this is going to open a floodgates for more extreme candidates in the next elections. Now, I was on the receiving end of a lot of racial slurs of people that looked like me, and I don't want that. And I thought to myself, what's going on? Where did this come from? And from the outside point of view, they don't see that you all are having an issue of ideology. They only look at color and nothing else. And, you know, you couldn't go back and you look at the Zogby Act. If you were to win and say, you know, it has to have a supermajority vote, we're reinforcing the stereotype that here in Alabama, we either don't understand our own rules, or we were complicit in not enforcing them. And I don't want that to happen. One major issue that I personally faced was getting young people to participate in government. I heard a lot of people talking about a black thing and a white thing, and I would habitually say, there's only one race of human race, and we all come in different colors. But what am I supposed to say to the youth when they say, why don't we have a president when normally it's four out of seven people choose that person? Is it because he's black? I'm really speechless as to what to say. And again, I know you all are wonderful people, but if you win this vote, same if you have five out of seven, it sends a very bad message to everybody else. And if we don't uphold tradition, imagine what we're saying to all our children moving forward, that if you do the right thing, if you follow tradition, it's no guarantee that you're going to be successful. And lastly, we have a vice president who is not able to even act in the capacity of a president because of technicalities. Now, just because something is legal, it does not mean it's the right thing to do. For an outsider, they cannot understand why a vice president would not be able to do what he's supposed to do. They do not understand why the council could vote on a vice president but not choose a president because of all the things that are going on. Now again, I know you all are all wonderful people, including Mayor Stimson. I emphasize Mayor Stimson, because I want all of you all to succeed. But with this seemingly, I say seemingly, I don't see as a racial issue. With a seemingly racial issue overtone, it will create the floodgate for a lot of injustice to move forward. And I don't want our city to have havoc reached. I don't want people to be saying, oh, the council's racist, oh, the mayor's racist, because none of this is true. It's all about ideology. And moving forward in our city, the choices you make, they have long-term implications. Now, this is the first time I've chose to speak out about anything that's since the election, because it's something that's very important to me. And I know that sometimes when you're really passionate about something, everyone thinks they're doing the right thing all the time. But I'm asking you to look at the consequences of your behavior on the community and on future elections. I know moving forward, none of you all want any more extreme candidates getting in there talking about, vote for me because of the color of my skin. It's just not, you don't want that. So moving forward, I ask that you follow tradition so that you can help Mayor Stimson fulfill his goal of having one Mobile. And more importantly, when you look in the mirror, I want you to ask yourself, will my grandmother be proud of what I'm doing, because of what I'm doing with the right intentions? And again, I have nothing but utmost respect for all of you all, and I wish that you all succeed so that Mayor Stimson can succeed too. Because if you all do not succeed, if he fails, we all fail, and we don't want that. And I thank you all for your time.
Vice President?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thompson, I'll turn a dead rule that our vice president does fulfill the role of the president. So that is, you know, he is acting as president, I mean, fulfilling the role as president, as vice president.
Well, thank you for explaining that to me, and I just want to say that a lot of people in the community, educated individuals, were unaware of that. But thank you again for clarifying that. It does help restore the dignity to this chamber that it deserves.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance is held over 01046. Ordinance took me in Chapter 1 of the Mobile City Code to allow certain criminal offenses to be charged by issuance of an Alabama uniform, non-traffic citation and complaint.
So moved.
Second.
Probable motion in second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you so much. This is an ordinance that my office does support, because it is hopefully going to allow the police officers to have discretion in dealing with individuals on certain activities that they witness, and it allows them to give a ticket as opposed to have to arrest. And again, it is at their discretion, I mean discretion, so they can still decide to do the other, more punitive activity. But by giving a ticket, and it does not take as long for them to dispense of the activity and to make sure that people remain safe, and it puts the police patrol officers back on the beat and able to be more proactive as opposed to being heavily reactive all the time. So I thank the administration for offering this to council, and look forward to it being implemented hopefully by this council and doing the service that we expect our police officers to perform. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Richardson?
Mr. Vice President, what this law is doing is allowing the police officers to write a ticket rather than carrying a person to jail for a number of offenses. What I attempted to do is add to this, the instance where people live inside of a neighborhood. Someone decided they want to go to the neighborhood store and buy a beer, and walking home from the store, they can be arrested, carried to jail, have to get bail, have to hire attorney, have to pay a fine just for holding a beer. Yet we have people that can walk downtown with the liquor in the hand. And I was told that we couldn't add that offense to this because it involved alcohol, and it would take a state, a change in the state law in order to do that. I will pursue this, because I think it's foolishness to carry somebody to jail because they have a beer in their hand. They're walking. And if they're driving a car, I understand that. They're walking home. I don't think that ought to be. Not only that, if you parked in front of your house with a beer in your hand, you can go to jail. So I couldn't do it, I can't do anything about that now. It's on my radar, and I'll be working on it.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Vice President.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, for the citizens of Mobile and District 1, Dinkin Richardson do not drink, so he's not advocating for himself.
No.
Yeah, Mrs. Gregory.
Mr. Vice President, thank you. I too want to applaud the administration for their work, Director Barber and Mr. Woods for putting this together. I know we had to come back to it and look at it again, make some changes, and thank you for doing that, because this really is good for the city. It's good for our citizens, and certainly a real bonus for public safety, because our police officers will be able to ticket rather than transport. And I think that's important, to keep more of our officers on our streets where they are so badly needed. So thank you, and I think this will pass unanimously. Thank you for all your efforts.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Resolutions held over 01733. Authorized construction agreement with Aldat for the 2016 Tiger Grant Complete Streets.
So moved. Second. Probable motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
01734. Authorized project agreement between the city of Mobile, Mobile County, and SSAB Enterprises.
So moved.
Second.
Probable motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
37735. Approve the application of C. Archer's Mall during business as port city limousine service for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a limousine service.
So moved.
Second.
Probable motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Astained.
Six affirmative, one abstention.
47736 and 737. Assent to the vacation of a portion of Dinkin's Drive and portions of lots 1 through 4 Martha Young Estates, and consider a right-of-way fee as a condition of vacation of a portion of Dinkin's Drive and portions of lots 1 through 4 Martha Young Estates.
Mr. Chair, I move that, I move both of these, and move that the right-of-way fee be set at $9,674.28.
Second.
Probable motion in second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I would ask that Mr. Olszewski come up and talk to us about how that number that I just came up with was determined.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
The vacation of right-of-way fee is covered in state law under the Code of Alabama 11-49-6. In addition to that, the city of Mobile passed an ordinance covering this. It's ordinance 57070-2015. In order to come up with the fee, there are two things required. First of all is the assessed value as published by the Mobile County Revenue Commissioner for all the parcels involved. That's not only the parcels being vacated, but all the parcels that are but the vacation. In addition to that, we have to have the accurate size of each of the parcels, which is provided by the land surveyors hired by the applicant. You take these two groups of numbers, and you go through the process as outlined in the law, and you come up with the maximum fee that can be charged. The council has the authority, obviously, to charge less than that, but the maximum is what's set by law. And the maximum is the number that Mr. Davis just said, $9,674.28. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Olszewski.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Resolution 6738. Adopt the city's silent waste management plan.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
03739. Reappoint Councilmember Best Rich to the Mobile City Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Probable motion in second. Any discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment, that the term be for one year.
Second. Probable motion in second, that this item be amended. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you. I think, well, I guess I'm being a little bit premature, but I hope that the city council will affirm my appointment to the planning commission, and I look forward to being their representative. I hope I've done a good job this past 18 months that was rotated, and look forward to any other councilperson who also comes forward and would like to serve as well. It's really an important tool for our community to be part of that public debate that goes on with rezoning, plan unit developments. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Will vote on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? I vote, there be no by the sound of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll go back to the original question. Is there a motion? So moved. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Rich, for your willingness to serve.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 64047 through 65048.
Motion to suspend rules for immediate consideration of 65048 and 65047, layover for one week by Council Rules.
Probable motion in second. Any discussion?
Who is the second? I'm sorry.
We need the latest, 048, lay it over more than one week.
Oh, I didn't hear who said.
Item, uh, that's not a part of the record.
The record is either unanimous consent or not. That's it. So.
Can't be taken outright.
Let's move, Mr. Chair.
Yes, yes, yes. Let's move forward.
Move for suspension of the rules for immediate consideration. I didn't have a second. Can I ask?
Miss, Mrs. Rich?
Do you need to vote on the unanimous consent?
We don't. We don't. It's been withheld.
No.
65048.
If it is unanimous consent, then please be voted on by.
Yes, sir.
Right.
I'm not voting.
We're on item 65048.
Yes.
And my understanding from our pre-council meeting that we were going to assign this particular item to a committee.
And that's the reason why?
And I'm saying I didn't have a second to suspend the rules.
Is there a second to suspend the rules?
I don't think it was ever motion to suspend.
Yeah, he did have a motion to suspend the rules.
There was a motion.
I didn't have a second. That's all.
We need a motion to suspend, a second to suspend the rules.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor suspending the rules? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
65048. Delete Chapter 52 and sections of Chapters 11, 25, and 28, and create new Chapter 52 of the Mobile City Code to be entitled Real Property Maintenance and Enforcement.
Motion to layover two weeks.
Second.
Any discussion? In the interim, in that two-week period, we're going to assign this to a real property ad hoc committee consisting of Mr. Councilman Joel Davis, Councilwoman Gina Gregory, and Councilman Fred Richardson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 03740 through 6759.
Motion to suspend rules for immediate consideration of said resolutions.
Is there a second?
Will we move? Do we need attorney? Because we didn't change the agenda. In the pre-council, the attorney, it's further down.
Through 03753.
Yes, we had to deal with who we get to. It's in.
It's further down, Mr. Williams.
Oh, I see, you know, we're going to move the table.
Yes, sir. Was there a second on the original question?
I will second.
Probable motion in second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Just let me make sure I understand. What we're voting on is to suspend the rules on 03743 through 03749. Is that correct?
No, through 6759 of all consent.
Right.
All the consent.
With the exception of 03754. It's hard to hear down here when y'all are discussing over there. Like, you're gonna have to speak up so that we can hear on this end what's going on.
Would the clerk repeat the motion, please?
No, no, ma'am. You have, we're gonna have to vote on it when we get to it.
Okay, so you are...
I'm gonna hold you up on that. I'm gonna withhold you now, just to make it easy.
Right.
That's what I thought you were doing anyway.
That's what...
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so there's a motion to suspend the rules on all resolutions with the exception of 03754.
Correct.
Do we have a second on that?
Is there a second?
Yes.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, there be some, no by the sound of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, ma'am.
037, um, 40 through 03753. Reappoint Sanford Davis to the Board of Adjustment. Reappoint Larisse Tolliver to the Historic Preservation Authority of the City of Mobile. Reappoint Larisse Tolliver to the History Museum of Mobile Board. Reappoint Ocelot to the Mobile Museum of Art Board. Reappointing R. Thomas Ankersen to the Civic Center Advisory Board. Reappointing Sandra Rankin, David Calmetti and Peter Belligen, Belligen to the Mobile Tennis Center Advisory Board. Reappoint Nancy Robertson, Sister Lucindia, Cleghorn, um, Charles Courtney, Carolyn Green, Minnie Walker to the Advisory Commission on the Disabled. Reappoint Vanessa Davis Wright and Joseph Palmer Jr. to the Police Citizens Community Relations Advisory Council. Reappoint Shirley Sessions, David McGrath, Joe Denton, Mike Johnson to the Citizens Budget and Finance Advisory Committee. Reappoint Reverend Milton Saffold, Charlotte Koff, Larry Dorsey to the Citizens Advisory Committee on Contracting Opportunities for Small Business and Minority-Owned Firms. Reappoint Lang Hamilton, Charles Jackson Jr. to the Public Transit Advisory Committee. Reappoint Timothy Hollis and Leslie Gula to the Citizens Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Reappoint Jeff Newman, Captain Eddie Merle to the Golf Course Advisory Committee. Reappoint Ben M. Radcliffe Jr. to the Coast Advisory Committee.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I just, uh, one note for the clerk on 03745. My nominee, there's an N missing, it's V, V A N L I N G E N.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
37755. Recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a special retail more than thirty days license for classic events on Government Street.
So, some move.
Second.
Is there, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, there be no by the sound of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
37756. Recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for Siam Thai Cuisine on Hillcrest Road.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Rich?
Um, I had asked for the police report to come in and I, I don't think it's been given to me, so I would ask that this be held up a week. I'm sorry, I went back to look at emails to see if anything came in. So, without a police report, this is, I know, a new owner and I'm sure everything's fine and I feel bad that the paperwork's not all together, but it's best to wait.
Mr. Vice President, uh, I too made that request and it has not come in, so support your holding.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll make that a motion to hold over a week.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm sorry, I missed the second.
Second.
57757. 57758. Declare weeds noxious and assess cost removal of weeds, Groups 1573 and 1566.
Some move.
Second.
Probably motion in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Thank you, I heard that one. 6759. Approve award of special bonus to Jeremy Birch and Johnny Duval as part of the Mayor's Incentive Program.
Some move.
Second. Probably motion in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
CLP resolutions being introduced for the first time, 21760 through 25762.
Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of a resolution 25762 and 760 and 61 were laid off for one week by Council Rules.
Second.
Probably motion in second, any discussion? All those, Mr. Rich? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item's passed.
25762. Authorize acceptance, acceptance of two permanent drainage easements and two right-of-way entry permits needed for 2017, Miss Atlanta Drainage Repairs.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 01763 through 47768.
By Council Rules, these are resolutions were laid off for one week.
Call for public hearings. 41769. Call for public hearing. Assenting to the vacation of an alley located at 356 South Royal Street, scheduled December nineteenth.
Some move.
Second. Probably motion in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements. The December nineteenth city council meeting will be held in the History Museum of Mobile, also known as Old City Hall. The council will not meet on December twenty-sixth and will return to its regular schedule January second, 2018.
At, at this time, I want to, just for clarity's sake, item 03754. Uh, the intention from when we held our, uh, pre-council meeting was to assign this particular agenda item to committee and that committee would meet, uh, expeditiously to bring back a report to the full council. And we've asked, uh, Councilman John Williams to chair that committee. Uh, he's already announced the date, uh, well, he will announce the date hopefully during his announcements and that other committee members would be Councilman CJ Small and Councilwoman Best Rich. We'll, we'll start with our announcements. Councilwoman Gregory?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. December third, uh, from one until five will be the annual Christmas on the Hill. That's where local businesses in the Spring Hill community are open on Sunday afternoon to, uh, allow people to come and get a real jumpstart on all of your Christmas shopping. Santa Claus is always there with a, not a sleigh, but a horse and buggy for all of the children and just a lo, a lot of events in the, uh, in the area for people to come take advantage of. It's a wonderful opportunity to, to shop local. And of course, we are trying to focus on shopping local this year as much as possible. December fifth will be my annual Christmas meeting at the Mobile Museum of Art. The time is at six o'clock. Again, we will be bringing gifts for the children at Wilmer Hall. We will also recognize our public safety officers as well as the, um, members of community action groups and neighborhood associations in the district. And the, um, choir from Mary B. Austin will be there this year to entertain, so that's something a little bit new and, uh, just look forward to everybody coming. Uh, also, kind of a heads up, you'll be getting some information about this going forward, but beginning the week of December fourth, a lot of the people in my district's, district will have their normal garbage collection day will change. It will be, instead of Mondays, we will now go to Wednesdays for normal garbage collection time. And it's not just my district, it will impact other districts as well. But, um, you'll be getting some information in the mail as well as plenty of social media, but I just wanted to go ahead and get that out there, that beginning the week of December fourth, um, if your garbage collection is on Monday, it will move to Wednesday. This will help a lot in our scheduling because, as you know, a lot of holidays fall on Monday or we celebrate the holiday on Monday, which was causing some problems for our, for our department to try to keep up with. They always had to make up on Wednesdays anyway, so this will just help them out. But again, we will be sending out more information on that. So, um, that's all from, uh, from my district. Uh, you probably will hear a little bit about our trip to the National League of Cities. We had a wonderful panel presentation on Saturday morning and being that it was Saturday and we had been there since Wednesday, we were kind of concerned that we wouldn't have a, a big group, but we did. We had a full house of people who were interested in finding out how we are able to do our capital improvement program, how we are able to collaborate with each other to make this program such a success. Mr. Richardson was our moderator. I, I, I just think everybody really enjoyed what they heard because, as we discussed, this is something that these city council members from all around the country can really wrap their arms around. It's, it's an issue that faces all of us and hearing how we make it work was something that they were very, very interested in. So, thanks to everyone who participated. Diane Irby was with us, Mr. Manzi, Mr. Richardson and myself, uh, Marion Steinfelds, who helped us put this all together. It was just a wonderful team effort and, uh, I mean, I, I think it was a, a job well done, so congratulations to everybody.
Mrs. Rich?
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to again thank the women with Quilts of Valor. It is a group, or at least the Sassy Stitchers, which is part of the Azalea City, um, Quilters Guild, um, meet up at the Senior Center, the Connie Hudson Senior Center. And, um, I understand that this is like the tenth or eleventh presentation in this month alone and they've given out fifty quilts. If you've not seen a presentation, um, please make every effort to, to see one because it is really rewarding. I appreciate also them being able to present to our public safety director. I had thought about presenting him at another occasion, but knew that when he stood up in order to, um, um, get the quilt for the gentleman who is not able to come from police and they were prepared with a third quilt to give it to our public safety director. And, um, I'll ask the chief of staff if he's able to get me his resume on his military career because I would like to pass it along to the women. They keep wonderful records about the quilts they give out. So, again, um, just thrilled to be able to be part of that kind of surprise for him. On December thirteenth, there is a, um, breakfast out at the Senior Center and that is a breakfast that my office sponsors, but it, everybody who comes to the center is welcome to, um, participate in the breakfast. They play holiday games and I would like to invite the mayor and other councilmembers to come up and I will warn you, you will be asked to play their Christmas games. It's a big part of this now second annual event for Christmas time. And they also give out socks to seniors at the same time. And so, they're collecting socks in a box at, at the center if you'd like to give some to then be given out that, that breakfast time. Also, I'd like to wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving holiday. Make good memories with your family, friends and loved ones and, um, stay safe. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, sir. At this time of year, I think it's appropriate to reflect upon the establishment, uh, well, the settlement of North America. Our country is unique in the world in many respects and one of the ways it's unique is that, uh, it was, it, we're all a nation of immigrants. We're all a nation of immigrants. The Native Americans are the only natives. All the rest of us came to this country and that has two implications. One is that, uh, we need to be tolerant of modern-day immigrants to this country because, again, we're all, uh, immigrants or children of immigrants. And secondly, we need to keep in mind the unique nature of the people. The, the people who came to this country left what they knew to come to a wilderness. They were very courageous people. They came, you know, a lot of, a lot of times when you left, uh, uh, Europe and sailed across the ocean in the, uh, seventeenth century, you didn't make it. Even a couple of centuries later, our second president, uh, described sea travel, uh, as like being in jail with the added disadvantage of being drowned at any moment. And I think, uh, that's very much true with respect to those people who risked their lives to come to this country. So, I think, I think as we sit down with our families and, uh, partake of the feast, uh, let's remember those, uh, who went before us, those who, uh, came over here and got things going in North America and the fact that, uh, we are a nation of immigrants and need to be, uh, need to remember that as we go forward. Thank you.
Mr. Small?
Uh, thank you, Reverend Manzi. As you had heard before on District Three, that it's coming Thursday, uh, that our country will be celebrating, uh, Thanksgiving, but we have to remember that every day is a day of Thanksgiving because God has been good to us, uh, especially in District Three and throughout the city of Mobile. As the holiday season approach, we have our annual events that's coming up. Annual Community Christmas Event will take place at six thirty P.M. on Tuesday, December twelfth at the Pillins Miller School. We will have food, drinks, games and entertainment. We also will be collecting, uh, perishable items, um, for elderly that's in our community. Please consider bringing a donation, items such as socks, toothbrush, uh, two-page pajamas, house slippers, unflavored lip balm, unscenting lotion, baby powder, blankets, hairbrush and combs. And again, this event will take place on Tuesday, uh, six thirty P.M. at the Palmer Pillins Miller School at December the twelfth. Also, uh, the Parades of Threes is coming up and we will hold our third annual holiday parade, uh, the Parades of Threes on Saturday, December the sixteenth at two o'clock P.M. The parade will partnership between Council District Three and State House District 103, Representative Barbara Drummond. Uh, we will start at the B.C. Rain High School on Dolphin Island Parkway and head north on Dolphin Island Parkway and we disband at the Pillins Miller School on Military Road, inviting all the citizens of District Three and not only District Three, but the City of Mobile to come out on Saturday, December the sixteenth at two o'clock P.M. and see the beauty of District Three as we celebrate the holidays traveling down DIP. And remember that District Three is the place where things are happening and I hope that you and your family have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Reverend Manzi.
Mr. Richardson?
Uh, thanks very much. I would like to, uh, wish all of the citizens in District One a happy and a safe Thanksgiving. I would like to, um, follow up on, uh, Councilmember McGregor's remarks regarding Charlotte. I would like to first of all commend her and Councilman Manzi and Executive Director Diane Irby for doing an outstanding job in representing Mobile at this conference. They had over four thousand, uh, people there and, uh, it was an honor for them to, um, invite us and, and, and let us come and present to the delegates. What we found out that we were not unique in having voted in, uh, an additional tax. Uh, we found out that most of those, those cities had done the same identical thing. In fact, we voted, we voted into one cent tax under Mayor Sam Jones. And, uh, under Mayor Stimson, we just extended the tax. But once we, we voted on a, we voted it under Mayor Sam Jones, we did the same thing all other cities are doing all over this country. The money went to a general pot and the mayor allocated and the council voted. But once we came down, once we, um, uh, extended the penny under Mayor Stimson, the council, this council took a bold different approach in that the money was dedicated. We, we dedicated the money. We said, uh, we're gonna give each council member three million dollars a year and we had money set aside for other projects. Otherwise, the penny generates about thirty-two million a year and we divided the whole thirty-two million up. So, this is how we want to spend these thirty-two million. So consequently, we ended up having money in our district for the first time in the history of the City of Mobile to, to tackle the infrastructure and that's why they had us to come up there because of the infrastructure backlog all over this country and they wanted to know, how did you do it in the City of Mobile? We dedicated the mo, we voted in the extra tax and we dedicated the money. We determined how we wanted that money to be spent. It was a bold move and I told those councilmembers, if you, if you're a weak, gutless chicken council, you will not be able to do this. It's gonna call for brave leaders and you can't lead from behind. You got to lead from the front, it's go to the, go in the back and sit down. So, uh, how many would want to follow this? I don't know, but they waited over and they asked us, could they, could we send them a copy of our ordinance, which is an indication to me that they wanted to do what we are doing. So, I think, uh, I, I know for a fact that our present, presentation, uh, did good... So I think, I know for a fact that our presentation did good because the people wouldn't leave after we finished. They came on the stage, they wanted more information from us. So this was the A-Team. The A-Team did a good job. Councilman Williams to come for more support. He drove his car all the way up there back to support us and he was able to witness what we did. But other than that, got a chance to talk with a number of citizens in Charlotte to find out, why is Charlotte the fastest growing city in America? Is Charlotte North Carolina? What, how did this happen? Let me say this, 10 years ago, Charlotte had 600,000 people. Today, they have more than 800,000. So in 10 years, they've grown past 2... They have, most citizens come to us in the last 10 years than what we have in the city of Mobile since 1702. They are moving with jet speed with new citizens coming. So I got with the officials and the citizens to find out, what are they doing? First of all, they say, the vast majority of the citizens that's moving to Charlotte are young people, right out of college. They're young people. And they are not coming there with these tribal ideas. They are not coming there fighting diversity. They are coming there to get a good job and they're not concerned about who's living over there, who is... They are not fighting that battle up there. The younger people are not fighting the battles that we're having to fight here. The issue of diversity, they're not fighting that. And consequently, they are able to move on forward. But when you have to fight diversity, who is in the school? Who's going to be over there? Who is who, who, who? You're always going to be behind. So leaders got to lead. If we want to overcome all of those type issues, we on this council got to march out first and provide the leadership because they're going to follow us. They're going to follow us. The road models, we are the road models. We got to set the pace for what we want our city to be. We can be just like Charlotte if that's what we want to be. Or we can continue to be just like we are. If it is to be, it is up to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I was indeed in Charlotte, but it was for more than moral support. I tried to sell this idea of CIP to the entire Alabama delegation as well as other states that would listen as I approached them and asked them to come to our meeting. You know, the thing that I found that was common among those capital improvement programs that have not worked is the equal distribution, is the absence of equal distribution throughout the entire city guaranteed by law. And that's the way you get politics out of this program and I think that was one of the big selling points as I talked to folks there. Also had an opportunity to talk to and witness a presentation addressing the veterans homeless issue that is being experienced in all communities. It is part of the Mayor's Challenge, the United States, I don't know what the organization is, but the Mayor's Conference, that they are, they are joined in hands across this great nation and Kansas City has taken the lead with tiny homes and a community just for veterans. And these are not honorably necessarily discharged veterans. These aren't necessarily our nation's heroes by some definitions. This is anyone that has served our country in any capacity whatsoever. That they'll welcome them in and get them the services that are needed. And I, I think that Mobile, it's high time that we do so. There are some organizations working very hard, but with the lead of Kansas City and the establishment of their program, I'll be looking to them to get ideas to implement that same thing here in Mobile. The other thing that I saw was bikes, bicycles, bicycles going everywhere. They do have a light rail. They have a vibrant bus or inner-city transportation system, but they also have bikes. Some like we've seen in other cities where they have docking stations, but mostly the ones I saw and the ones I used, the ones you simply go up to with your phone and an app that you download very quickly, scan a bike, it pays for it through Apple Pay and you just take off riding and it bills you a dollar for every 30 minutes. And I've asked the representatives from those two bike companies to come to Mobile and see what they can do in our city. Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Richardson?
Yeah, Mr. President, I would just like to say that I would like for, Mary, I would like for you to contact the President of the Alabama League of Municipalities to see at that next convention, whether or not we could do the same presentation before them as we did before National. Can you do that for us? All right, thank you. That's it.
Yes, sir. I want to start my announcements by announcing our Christmas Leadership Meeting will be at the Villa Center on December 7th at 6:00 PM. Everyone in the district that considers themselves to be a leader and that'll be willing to be a leader in 2018, you're certainly welcome to come and to fellowship with us at this Christmas Leadership Meeting. We're asking that all participants, everyone who would come to bring an item for the senior citizen program that is housed there at the Villa Center. Looking forward to that. Appreciative of Ms. Mary Taylor Stevenson and her committee who have for the last three years worked so diligently toward this Christmas Leadership Meeting. I want to also just say how proud I am and how proud I was to be a part of the contingent from Mobile presenting at the National League of Cities Summit. There are some 18,500 cities in the United States, so to have the opportunity to present at the ultimate city summit was quite an honor to my colleagues, Councilwoman Gregory, to Councilwoman Fred Richardson, who was the moderator over our panel, to Ms. Marion Steinfelds, who did a great job helping us get everything organized and planned, to Ms. Diane Irby, who certainly added a whole lot of context to our discussion, and to Mr. John Williams, who did drive from Mobile to Charlotte and literally was more than moral support. I believe he was our biggest cheerleader. Our, our presentation was the best attended presentation and I believe that was in large part to John letting everybody know that Mobile was putting this show on the road.
Yes, indeed.
We got a lot of emails, a lot of inquiries relative to how we've been so successful, how did we take the politics out of the process? And again, from Ms. Gregory to Mr. Richardson to Ms. Irby, to Ms. Steinfelds, to everyone, it was a great showing for the city of Mobile. I had an opportunity to speak with the individual who's over the host committee for the National League City Summit and that lady on yesterday called me and we're going to try to work with our CBP to get the city summit here in the city of Mobile and in one of the subsequent meetings. So it was a great convening. City of Mobile was well represented. On Thursday, I ran for a position on the National League of Cities Board of Directors and happened to announce that I did receive a two-year term. So I look forward to working with them and our executive director to really advancing the cause of cities across this country. A lot of things that are important to our cities are under attack. Municipal bonds, CDBG funds, all of those things are under attack from a federal standpoint. So it's very important that we have a voice and that we be as proactive as possible with these issues important to cities. Speaking of that, last week, the House Representative passed a federal tax reform package that cuts the historic tax credit. And this particular item is real important to me because a lot of our historic buildings are in District 2, the district that I represent. These important tax incentives have been a key driver of revitalization in our city, especially downtown. After the Thanksgiving break, when the Senate returns, they will continue work on their version of the tax reform bill. A number of senators are working on an amendment to restore those incentives. And I don't need to tell any of you how important those incentives are and how proven they have been relative to creating jobs because they often lead to local entrepreneurs being willing to invest their resources to revitalize forgotten neighborhoods and stimulate forgotten economies, all while preserving the beauty of our old buildings and the historic nature of our city. So I'm going to ask our colleagues, my colleagues rather, to join me in urging our federal delegation to ensure that these incentives are protected, that we can continue to revitalize our historic communities in the city of Mobile and that we can continue to see these much-needed tax credits utilized by historical preservationists to preserve our downtown and other important areas of the city. Are there any further announcements? Any announcements from the administration? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move.
Second?
Probably motion second. All those in favor of adjournment, sign of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Leave the adjournment. Thank you. I haven't heard about that. Yeah. I'll be going to my favorite city of the world.